We're just glad you're here.
Oh, wow, look at you.
We're gonna start this meeting.
I went through all of this and you aren't here.
Meeting is now been called to order. Ms. Harden, would you take care of the roll call, please?
Chairperson Jim Sawtell, Vice Chairperson Robert MoMA.
Here.
Commissioners Joanne Eaton.
Here.
Lois Harden here, Mark Laces, Jerry Malia.
Here.
Jason Reese. Tom Ricker.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Planner Fred Fox.
Here.
Attorney Liz Cross.
Here.
Associate Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Do we have a publication, since we had a couple of matters that are gonna be voted upon?
But you have to open the public hearing first.
Did.
No.
Oh, sorry.
No, I think we have to do the...
Roll call first.
The approval of the agenda and then the consent and public comment.
Okay.
Before we can get into the...
Everybody had a chance to review the agenda. Is there a motion? Can I get a motion?
To approve the agenda?
To approve the agenda, yes.
All in motion.
Second.
Motion.
Motion being made in second, let's put it to a vote. All in favor?
I have to abstain.
Okay, abstain. Just approval of the agenda. Okay, and then it's the public comment? If there's anybody here for a regular public comment on an agenda, consent or non-agenda items?
Right. So this is a time for public comment on either the agenda items and non-agenda items. If you do have comments, after you approach today, would you please just tell us your name and where you're from and where you live, and then we can proceed from there. The first matter that we're gonna take up has to do with improvements being made by the state, as I recall, to the McCaslin underpass and what have you, and I think you're gonna make, have a presentation, Alex?
So just for clarification, we're in item, agenda item number four.
Yes.
So public comment on the consent agenda and non-agenda items.
Okay.
We'll get to the public hearing on the items six and seven a little bit...
Later.
Later, but let's get through items four and five if we can first.
That's what I intended to do. So it's open for a public comment on agenda item number four. Any, okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, the minutes from March 1. Have you had a chance to review those?
I did, yes.
And any comments regarding the minutes or amendments? Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
And the second?
I wasn't there.
I was.
I'll...
Okay. Motion being made in second, let's vote on whether we're approving the minutes. All in favor? Thank you.
Abstain.
Okay, now we have this portion of the meeting on the public hearing and adoption of a resolution recommending approval of the trail project to be constructed between the McCaslin Bus Rapid Station and Coal Creek Regional Trail. Any public comments on that?
No, you have to open the public hearing now. You have to actually say, "Open the public hearing."
Okay, we'll open the... I apologize, gentlemen, this is my first time at that here. I can open the hearing now.
And I have proof of publication.
And you have proof of publication, thank you. I take note of it. Do you want to go ahead with your presentation?
Yes, I'm Alex Aronello, Director of Public Works and Utilities, and I do have with me the town civil engineer, Alex Gorcevsky. Tonight, we're presenting to you the trail project, and the town code provides for a review of major public improvements, and so after a public hearing, you make a recommendation to the town board, who ultimately makes the decision whether to go forward with the project. Town has received a federal grant for the construction of a trail and landscaping from the McCaslin BRT station to the McCaslin underpass, and then from the underpass to the Coal Creek Regional Trail. This trail will provide a direct connection for residents, employees, and users of the Superior Town Center and Superior Plaza developments who desire to walk or bike to the McCaslin BRT station or the Superior Marketplace. The... Just to give you some refreshers on the US-36 Managed Lane Project, which Phase II just recently opened, including construction of a new BRT station at McCaslin on Lewisville side and on Superior side, construction of the diverging diamond interchange, which eliminates, eliminated the southwest loop, and construction of the McCaslin underpass, and also the construction of the Davidson Mesa Underpass further up the hill, and construction of the US-36 Bikeway. I bring these up because I wanted to put this in perspective. You have analysis.
So what the project built, US-36 project built in yellow is the US-36 Bikeway. It's on the north side of US-36 as it goes into Lewisville, goes through the McCaslin BRT station on Lewisville side, goes under the McCaslin Bridge, goes under the westbound off-ramp, and then continues on under the Coal Creek Underpass. And then from there, it goes up, up the hill, up to the new bridge, utility bridge, and over to Vista Hospital, and then on into Westminster. So it's a regional bikeway. Already in place is the Coal Creek Regional Trail. That's been in place for a number of years, and that goes under McCaslin, under the bridge. In blue, from this star to the McCaslin Underpass, and this has been built as part of the DDI, is a trail that was constructed as part of the DDI project, and what we're focusing in tonight is the extension of that trail behind Breaks Plus, behind Old Chicago, that comes down and meets up to the Coal Creek Regional Trail on the US-36 Bikeway. To put this further... Here's your 3D view of the interchange, and this is gonna bring up the trail projects, that's why I'm showing it. Takes about four minutes, but you approved the DDI project some years ago, so this gives you a feel of what's been built and how it operates. A nice aerial view is good, because you can't see a lot of the features just by driving over the bridge. So we have the crossover intersections. This is going down to Dillon. Here's the crossover, the new arch that was built. Right here is the McCaslin Underpass that goes through the, through the bridge. You can see this portion of the, of the trail has been built. That's where the southwest loop was, and so as part of the project, we were able to get that trail built. You can see the McCaslin Underpass, so the trail goes under, and this portion of the trail has been built. That's Breaks Plus here. You can see the bus underpasses. And the features of the DDI, of course, are the free left turns onto the, the bridge, and the free lefts onto the on-ramps. Okay, so that gives you a feel of the big picture. I'll get a little more detail in some of the pictures on the trail itself. Also, this is Superior Town Center. I put this up, also it shows the US-36 Bikeway going from Coal Creek, Coal Creek up the hill, crossing, back over US-36 to Vista Hospital. It shows how the town center connects the US-36 Bikeway, and then more importantly, the core area, the high-density area here, Boulder Valley Ice, has a connection down to the US-36 Bikeway and down to the trail that we're about to build. So this is an important link connecting this whole trail system back behind Superior Plaza to the BRT station. So that's the big plan. Looking at some of the pictures, this is probably our most problematic section, because this is pretty steep coming into the BRT station. This is the new, the new BRT station on the Superior side, and so the trail's been built directly into the station. Right down here is the bus ramp, and we had a retaining wall, and that's why we need a fence to separate the trail from the bus ramp. This is looking east, going up the hill. Here's a Superior Marketplace, so this was where the southwest loop is, and so the DDI project didn't finish the landscaping, so this project will complete that landscaping. We'll show you the landscaping plans in a minute. Going further up towards the, the underpass, we have some slopes that we need to landscape. And here's the underpass as you go into it, and actually when you're down in this area right now, it becomes real quiet, because you're down below, and this could be a nice meeting place at some point, maybe we put an amphitheater down here, because it's a nice, nice place. Here's the underpass, and we, we do hope to put some art in the underpass at some point, maybe some lighting or other things, and, and that's yet to be determined. Okay, going the other way, so we're on the Breaks Plus side, here's Breaks Plus, and looking back at the underpass. This is a storm pipe that comes through, daylight's here, and then goes into a open ditch. This is looking east. Now, this landscaping will be taken out, and we'll continue the path through this, through this landscape. Here's another problematic section of the trail, because this, they, they built an open ditch, pretty steep slope, so we're gonna have to construct a retaining wall, about a four-foot retaining wall, for about 300 feet, and on top of that'll be a fence to make sure that the bikes don't fall into this retaining, this open ditch. Continuing on, the, the ditch actually gets piped at this point, and this is probably our tightest point. We want a 10-foot wide trail right in here, or about nine and a half feet as we kind of scoot through this pinch point. This landscaping will be taken out, and we'll be replacing it with other landscaping. Continuing on towards the, around Old Chicago, keep going the wrong way. Again, there's guardrail, it becomes, the ditch is piped, so we're going on top of the pipe through a flat area. And then this is our lift station at the end of Old Chicago, and we'll go around that, and the pipe, daylight's again into the concrete channel, but it's pretty flat here, so we'll just go along the channel and connect up to the US-36 Bikeway back here. Hotels are planned in this area, and we've already seen some initial plans for hotels to come in. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Alex Gorcevsky to talk about the landscaping.
Okay, so here is, this is our consultant, FHU, which put together the design drawings. We flipped really quick through the schedule. It's, it's actually pushing us into early next year. We've had some, some unforeseen changes, I think Alex alluded to that one, where that existing trail was a little bit too close to the ditch, so we're having it resurveyed. It's gonna take us a little bit. And so that, that's, that's in the works right now, but otherwise, everything's moving forward pretty well. So I'll walk you through this a little bit. So that existing trail is right here, that 10-foot wide concrete trail. We'll connect to it there, and then right here, we'll have an access point. This is an access ramp, and this is Breaks Plus over here, Superior Liquor over there, so it kind of makes it a nice, friendly pedestrian access here, bike access to get onto the trail. And what you see here, that line is a retaining wall, like Alex mentioned, in some areas where we have a steep drop-off, unsafe conditions without, without a fence, so that retaining wall will support a fence and, and kind of add, add some safety to the trail. So as we're heading east, Alex mentioned that pinch point right here, we get a little narrow, we curve out of that, and then, there's been an update since this drawing was done. You have to forgive me, I'm battling a cold, so I'm working through this a little bit. This is another access point that we had previously. What we decided, though, with, working with the owners of Superior Plaza, who, who are really supportive of this project, is we'll put that ramp here instead. Makes a lot more sense, because there's a bike rack already in this area, this is Old Chicago's, much, much cleaner, much more visible to put a ramp here, an access ramp. And again, we're, we're continuing this way through the trail, and go to the next, next drawing. We had a good comment, this was feedback Alex Aronello had from, from other people experienced with trails, but once they start plowing this on-ramp, eastbound 36, you know, those, those snow piles are moving pretty quick, and they're pushing a lot of snow, and it, and it carries over. So what we want to do here is add some, some landscaping, kind of not just as a visual buffer, but also to protect us from all that, from all the snow that's, that's getting pushed over off of 36. So we got landscaping plans coming, but, but that's an area of concern for that. Now, we come through here, and, you know, it's, it's not really exciting, there's no fences here, it's just a 10-foot wide concrete trail, and right here, we, we made sure to have a, a large flare, so that we don't have any, we, we have a smooth transition, you know, going onto the Coal Creek Trail or continuing on to BVI from here, and then, of course, this is the underpass at, at 36 for Coal Creek. And then, working back, I mean, you can kind of see maybe in that key map, this is the southwest corner of the McCaslin 36 interchange. So this is already there, we already saw some of those photos, you know, in, in Alex's presentation, and so this is some of the, some of the vegetation that we'll be seeing. I'm not a botanist, so I can't get into many details, but it just shows you that we do have plenty of, of access to it. It's gonna, it's gonna look a lot nicer than it does now, and we'll have a lot of deciduous type trees, some sod, some native plantings throughout this area. So we're trying to make it so that it's a place you do want to go. It's not a place you want to just get through, but, you know, we'll try to beautify it as much as we can. Moving on, other access point, and this is coming up, where Alex said this kind of down below, this is that point where we go into the underpass, and hopefully, we can, we can improve the lighting and, and the entrance and exit of that underpass. I think we have a project, we have some budget to do that kind of work. And then we come through the underpass, and now, again, this is the existing trail as of today, this is where it stops and where we start. So we pick it up here, and this'll probably change just a little bit. Again, I think they put, C.DOT put this trail a little too far to the ditch, or close to the ditch, so either retaining wall will be constructed here, or they'll have to move it and re-relay that trail back where it should be here, instead of where they have it, which is right in there. So we're coming through this narrow strip of landscaping, we're doing some hardscape over here. And again, this is with input from the, the owners over at Superior Plaza. Their main objective was, was low maintenance, good visibility, and, and I think, I think this project will succeed in that light. Continuing through, and again, that, that ramp is now gonna be here, handicap access as well. I want to show... This one right here? So, so this is, this is where we're gonna start adding some of those, you know, eight-foot type trees. We can't go too high, otherwise we obscure the signage, and that's, that's something that they didn't want us to do. So we're gonna, we're gonna update some of that landscaping there. And again, this is kind of a tricky place, and this is why we're redoing the survey. There's a steep drop-off. I don't think the engineers quite envisioned how high of a berm we'd have over that large diameter storm drain. But we do, so we're gonna have to kind of come up with something creative to get through here. You know, nothing we can't handle. So I think that's kind of the, just general layout of how it looks like in some of the landscaping.
Any questions? Seems pretty straightforward to me.
It does. I just have one question. You mentioned that there is a grant for this through the Department of Transportation, is that correct?
It's a federal grant, and was awarded through Dr. Cog, and we're working with C.DOT. C.DOT's administering the grant.
Okay, great, thank you. So in addition to that, what portion of town funds will have to be included to complete?
The grant, the total project for that grant was $750,000, $600,000 in federal funds, $150,000 in local funds. We also are, I think, supplementing that with some additional dollars if, if we need additional landscaping, some features that the town had already budgeted some funds for landscaping. So we're, the town will probably spend $200,000 to $250,000 of our funds, and then supplemented by about $600,000 of the federal funds. Also, the federal funds also include a bike shelter. You know, you see in the caged ones that they have in Boulder, bus and bike, and that'll be up by the, by the handicap parking, so that'll be part of the project as well.
Just one other thing, will this portion of the project include the start of our wayfinding signs, or will that come later?
It'll probably come in later, we'll probably put a few. We're also working on another grant. The whole corridor, all the BRT stations have gotten a, a grant that's starting up this, this summer to do wayfinding around the, the stations. So we're gonna wait till that gets off the ground, and they're gonna define all the specs that go along with signings, the size of signs and fonts and all that. So as that proceeds, we'll kind of build on, on that and provide additional wayfinding, finding signs, I don't know, that go up this year, but definitely within a year.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Alex. Is there any comments from people in attendance?
Sure.
I just wanted to say, I was down there at lunchtime today. I was on the, the west side of the BRT, and then where the Coal Creek Trail comes in from Lewisville. I walked through the tunnel under 36 this afternoon and walked around out there, and as this comes together, this, this little stretch is gonna be fantastic, just to connect it all. It looks fantastic. It is very quiet when you get down there, the, you don't hear the traffic from 36 at all, really. And along Anthony's lines, I'd really like to see those, those wayfinding signs come in and add some, some superior color to it, because it's, it's kind of generic signs that are down there now, that are, that are there, but it looks fantastic. Thank you very much.
Just a point of order, Phyllis, I close the discussion for this leg, so to speak, and then move on to the next one.
Yes.
Okay.
Unless staff has any...
I was just gonna confirm, yes, you can go ahead and close the public hearing. Discussion has already been started among the commission, but if you want to continue that and then move towards an action item, that would be a good process.
Is there anything else on the board? We'll close this portion of the hearing, and now consider the next item.
The discussion.
I'm sorry, pardon me.
So now would be the appropriate time for the commission to have discussion on this project in front of you, and if the commission feels inappropriate, make a motion to recommend approval, pass along any recommendations to council to continue the progress.
Okay.
Once we have a motion and an action on this item, then we'll move on to the next version of the item, which would be the, the public hearing on the FDP and special use permit.
Okay.
In item seven.
Anything you guys can talk about?
I would just reiterate my comments that were misplaced earlier. Thank you, Ms. Cross.
Sure.
We need it, looks good, it works.
Yeah.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I could see the one, the bike path to Boulder for the first time the other day, because I don't usually go 36, and I'm like, oh my gosh, that goes all the way to Boulder. Yeah. It's like, always pretty neat.
It's gonna be nice.
Yeah.
I saw two gentlemen skateboarding down the hill a few days ago.
I wonder if we need more signage.
They were going pretty fast.
I think the, the only concern I would have is some of the issues that were brought up by our presenters, in terms of some of the sloping landscape that's there, and some of the additional grading that needs to be done, and, you know, how will that be addressed, and how can we assure, you know, before we put a stamp on this, that those things will be done to specific specifications, and, you know, so that it, it is safe.
Chair, further thoughts in that regard, Alex?
The grading, yeah, we're working with, first of all, working with the existing contractor who built it, and we feel he can build it quite right, so we're still negotiating with that and how we rectify it. So we'll, we'll work all that out, and all these other things. We brought it to you now, we're, we're still in the design stages, and we want to give you a chance to make any changes you want, but we'll work, we'll, we'll work those comments out and make sure we have a project we can all be proud of.
Sure. Sounds good, thank you. That being, any other comments? That being so, we'll close this portion of the hearing.
We have to adjourn for a moment, I believe, there, for the commission's convenience, there is a draft resolution in your package.
Right.
That would be the subject of a motion at this point.
Right. A motion on the draft resolution.
I'd like to make a motion.
And then I just read this part that's already been prepared for us here.
The number in this?
Perfect, perfect. A motion regarding Town of Superior Planning Commission Resolution Number PC-4, Series 2016. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of the McCaslin BRT station to Coal Creek Trail Project Plan.
I second the motion.
Second? All in favor? 均匀 We're now gonna open the meeting as it relates to the second resolution.
Yep.
Which I'll do by this, that's now ready to go. And this is a public hearing and adoption resolution recommending approval of the final development plan and special use review for lots one and two, Block One, Superior Town Center.
For the record, I have proof of publication.
Thank you. Is the staff ready to present on this?
Yeah, Stephen Williams, Town Staff. As stated, this application is a final development plan and a special use review for Superior Retail. Center point is proposing, as the applicant is proposing to construct a 7,594 square-foot multi-tenant commercial building on Lot One. The structure would include 5,380 square feet of restaurant space and 2,214 square feet of retail. The special use request required, is required by the Superior Town Center Plan Development because Starbucks, the southernmost restaurant user, is proposed to include a drive-through component. These two illustrations reflect the location of the subject properties, both within Superior as well as within the town center. So the previous discussion was talking about the Superior Plaza place, which is just north. Breaks Plus is here, so Lot One, Block One is just south of Breaks Plus, and Lot Two of Block One of the Superior... And Lot two of Block one of the Superior Town Center is directly south of Superior Liquor. Both parcels are just northeast of the intersection of McCaslin and Marshall Road. This is the site plan that was included with the proposal. And as detailed in the applicant's project narrative, the multi-tenant building would include a Starbucks along the southern elevation here, as well as a Firehouse Subs and two other national tenants. The proposed drive-through would originate in the northeast corner of the building site, and then kinda continue along to the west and end in the southeast corner of the building, where it connects with this primary drive aisle, which is a fifty-five-foot access easement that's currently existing and will remain intact through this proposal. Lots one and two collectively encompass one point five acres of land. The division is shown right here along this property line. At one, at zero point eight-two acres, Lot one is proposed to includes the, proposed to include the commercial building as well as this primary north-south access drive and ten parking lot spaces along the front of the building here. Lot two, at zero point six, six-eight acres, would include the remaining seventy-nine parking spaces, associated drive aisles, parking islands, and shopping cart storage bases, as well as the trash and recycling enclosure, which is located here. The proposed commercial building on Lot one is roughly sixty-seven feet wide and a hundred and seventeen feet long. As situated, it meets all the applicable setback requirements. The primary entrances to this building face east towards the proposed parking area. Brushed and scored concrete patios are proposed on each side of the building. This would total roughly forty-five hundred square feet in total outdoor floor area that they're proposing. And monument signs here on the northwest corner of the building and the southwest corner of the building are also proposed. Colored concrete crosswalks are also proposed near both the entrance to the drive-through and at the exit, as well as in the central location here to provide east-west access from the proposed parking lot to the primary building here. The same treatment is proposed along this southern concrete, or crosswalk as well, and then along this crosswalk that's proposed to extend all the way north-south on the, the west side of, of Lot two, essentially. As this aerial illustrates, this is the proposed, or this is the existing, excuse me, configuration of Lot two, so there is a parking lot there now. I just wanted to make sure everyone's clear that this is proposed to be redeveloped entirely. So, currently the access, or the, the way that the, this parking lot's configured is with two drive aisles, and the proposed Lot two would include three drive aisles and additional parking, which has been discussed and agreed upon through a separate access and maintenance agreement, I believe. Am I right? Okay. Parking, parking and easement agreement, thank you. So, that's been discussed already, but, and that configuration's basically been discussed and agreed upon. Parking for the development on Lot one will primarily be accommodated by these extra spaces that are shown on Lot two, but ten, including their four required handicap spaces are shown right directly in front of the building. In total, eighty-nine parking spaces are proposed, all of which will be head-in stalls. The proposed commercial building at seven five hundred and ninety-four square feet requires forty-three spaces to meet parking requirements within the PD. The additional parking on Lot two is to be shared with Superior Liquor, which exists to the north. As such, some of the improvements that are shown on this site plan are also to benefit Superior Liquor, which include these two shopping cart corrals that are located here. And then you, there's other off-site improvements that show how the connection between these two facilities or two locations will be developed. So, the crosswalk here, and then the crosswalk and improvements here to connect with Superior Liquor. Additionally, there's some site, site improvements, off-site improvements to the south here. A detached sidewalk will be built along Marshall Road. This is only gonna extend, basically, the extent of Lot one, and then cross the, this access drive here. There's no improvement shown south of Lot two yet. As you may be aware, this portion of Marshall Road doesn't exist. It basically terminates right here. So, when the town and the developer of the Superior Town Center comes in with that improvement to continue Marshall Road, these additional improvements, including detached sidewalks, onsite landscaping, as well as detention facilities, will be installed within this area. This plan sheet was included at the request of staff to provide some broader context regarding how lots one and two will interface with McCaslin to the west, Superior Plaza Way to the north, Marshall Road to the south, and Lot three of Block one within the Superior Town Center to the east. Vehicular access to this site will remain unchanged, with Superior Plaza Way and Marshall Road still providing the two primary access points. Superior Plaza Way is a right-in, right-out interchange, and the interchange here with Marshall Road and McCaslin is full of movement. No changes are proposed here. The associated traffic analysis that came in does suggest that this, this southbound travel lane will need to be changed from a, a one turn to a double-turn lane, and staff will begin working on getting the striping updated for that in the next several weeks. But that's the only real change that was dictated or suggested, I should say, by the, the traffic study that came in as a part of this application. These dash green lines also illustrate how the pedestrian connectivity will, is planned, and some of it's already existing. But there's a attached sidewalk that lines the northern section of Lot one, and an attached sidewalk that's already in place along McCaslin. This detached sidewalk within Marshall Road will connect and get people all the way across the drive aisle, which will then allow them to go all the way north to Superior Liquor. There's also a pedestrian connectivity running north-south on the west side of that drive aisle, right adjacent to the proposed retail space. The proposed building elevations reflect a variety of building materials, colors, heights, and facade articulation. The first, the front of this building faces east, that's shown here in this middle elevation. You can see that they've proposed three different stucco materials, as well as a stone veneer element that is featured in three of their building elevations. This elevation faces east and will serve as the, the primary entrance to the, to the site for, for the, you know, for the most, for the most part. This, this site is a little unique in the sense that it actually has four road frontages, so to speak. So, we worked carefully with the architect to get the archi, the architecture, you know, up to snuff, cause it is a very, very visible, very visible site. But the, but essentially, you see this beige-yellow stucco veneer here, and I gave you guys a material board that's up there, so you can see the colors a little bit better. And then a tan, and then more of a brown color here. And they, the, the articulation of the roofs, the heights, also kinda help set apart the different tenant spaces. Then, south elevation, this is the drive-through site. Shows three different colors or finishes as well, with the stone being more prominent here. There's also this light tower element, which we can show you some additional photos of that the applicant provided in the last few days. This is just a light box. We clarified that there's no signage proposed within this tower element. It's just an architectural feature, and it's a very subdued lighting. The lighting that's included for the light box, as well as the monument sign lighting, and the lighting that's proposed along each elevation, will essentially run the hours of operation of the businesses. For Starbucks, that's five in the morning till ten at night. For the other tenants, that's essentially ten, ten in the morning to ten at night. So, those hours of operation will more or less be enforced for the, for the lighting of the signages as well. The PD technically allows for a thirty-minute overage after closing, so it could go till ten-thirty at night. I think that's exactly the language of the staff's memo. But on this eastern elevation, we show four twenty-one-square-foot sign bands. And on the north elevation, or the south elevation here, there's two twenty-five-foot sign bands. And we'll get into those in a little bit more detail here with the next elevation. These are the elevations for the north, so this is actually facing Superior Plaza Way. And then for the west elevation, which is facing McCaslin, there's also four sign bands and four distinct tenant facades here. Again, with the three different stucco finishes. This tower element being more prominent on the southwestern corner. You can see the, the light box here, and then a strong stone veneer element here, as well as kind of right in the center of the building separating the tenant spaces. So, four very distinct tenant spaces along McCaslin. And then the north side here will be the, the retail spaces, as, as I understand it. This is also where they're getting their utilities from. So, they're showing that their utility boxes here will all be painted to match that same tan stucco facade that's proposed for the center. The other thing here is instead of two signs on the, on this facade, they're only proposing the one sign to be focused on the northwest corner, which staff, you know, generally is supportive of. The one, I guess, condition that we're, or not condition, but the caveat that we're, we've highlighted in our staff memo is that the, that neither monument signs of this type, the multi-tenant monument signs, nor three-sided building signage is really contemplated by the current PD. And as illustrated in one of our first slides, this is way out, about as far outside of the, the planning area, the core of the planning area as you can be. So, similarly to why a special use review could be contemplated here for a drive-through, where we may not support a drive-through in the center of the Town Center. It's location-based and site-appropriate. So, that's kinda why, where staff felt it was appropriate to support a drive-through component on Lot one here. And then similarly, two-sided arc, or two-sided signage is the only thing that was really composed or contemplated through the PD, and that's really just for corner properties. So, in this case, we actually have a four-sided building footprint that, that's gonna have frontage on Superior Plaza Way, Marshall Drive, and McCaslin Boulevard, as well as needing to face where most of their foot traffic is gonna be originating from, to the east. So, staff doesn't have any concerns with this regard for those, their proposed signage either. The one thing that they are adhering to that is stipulated within the PD is a linear foot. So, basically, they're allowed to have one square foot of signage for every linear foot of building frontage they have, and they're well within those limits. So, that's kinda where we landed with those. I think we've covered it all here. If you guys have any questions on the signage, these are gonna be internally illuminated. They would go off with the same business hours of operation, and they've incorporated the same stone features and stucco colors, so it'll blend very well with the architecture of the building. Finally, we get to the, the landscape plan. The landscape sheets in the application illustrate the types, locations, sizes, and general care of the species proposed. The types and species were generally categorized as trees, shrubs, grasses, and perennials, and they were chosen in accordance with the design guidelines. Center Point has requested a few exceptions to these guidelines as far as their numeric limits. To begin, the applicant has requested that we not require street trees here and here, essentially because we're proposing to add this sidewalk. And really, this is just for safety reasons, to have the sidewalk go through the island to keep traffic out of these drive aisles as much as possible. There's no room for trees here. So, they've requested that they not be included here, here, or here. And this is presumably for visual safety concerns. Staff has gone further and actually asked them to eliminate the trees in both of these locations so that we do have this ingress and egress vision safety clearance that we would like to see and ensure that there's no, no conflicts. So, staff has also asked that until, this is a pretty busy area as far as utilities go, so we're gonna hold off on installing the trees in Marshall Road. They will provide the detached sidewalk, and they will provide some more temporary or interim landscaping to go along this, it's what's called, just this buffer area between the sidewalk and the, and the right-of-way. This tree lawn that will be landscaped temporarily, but we'll come back with more permanent landscaping and, and make a decision on how many trees. Certainly, I don't think that's gonna end up being four based on the amount of utilities. There's a fairly large, I believe it's a stormwater line that runs through this area. And it's the same thing along here. They've asked for an exception for the amount of trees that are, are put in Superior Plaza Drive. And we're, we're fine with that. Really, the two that they've shown are about as, as much as you can fit in this area. And if we were to contrast this with the utility plan, you'd see that this, basically, this line shows where that utility easement is, and there's a number of lines all through this area. So, they've done well to, to come up with what they have, and we're actually gonna probably cut it back a little bit further in order to ensure that, that we have adequate separation and we don't run into maintenance issues in the future. I believe that covers it. Staff has reviewed this, you know, both for the FDP, and has found it to be complete and consistent with both the Superior Town Center PD, as well as all zoning and town ordinances and regulations. Has, we've also reviewed this as, in terms of how the special use review for the drive-through meets applicable criteria, and have found it to be appropriate for this location as well. So, happy to answer any questions that you may have. We can also go to those additional images for the light box, if you guys have any questions on that.
I have a question about the drive-through. It's that for you or for the applicant?
You can ask either one of us.
Is it just for Starbucks? Cause I saw there's two menu boards.
It's just for Starbucks. So, there are two menu board locations, and typically you have, I mean, I don't know if you guys can explain that better.
My name's Chaz. My name is Chaz with G3 Architecture. Typically, with Starbucks, you will have a main menu board where you actually order your food or drinks. And then there's a pre-menu board that you can view the menu board prior to actually physically making the order. So, it kinda just helps speed things up a little bit. And so, that's, that's why we see the two there.
And where is the pickup window?
Pickup window is...
Right there. How tall are those monument signs? I'm sure it's in the report, but...
It is. I think they were seven-four?
Yeah, something like that. I can get to it.
Yeah, I believe it's seven-four by twenty-five feet wide, or twenty-five feet in length, and then three feet wide.
And how many tenants are you gonna have in?
There'll be four.
Four, but there's room for six tenant signs?
That's correct.
Correct. So, this current sign up here, this is Steven, Town Staff. In the northwest corner, there's already an existing sign, and that sign is for Superior Liquor and Old Chicago. So, as part of this proposal, they're gonna incorporate those two tenants within both of their monument signs so that they remain signed along McCaslin. So, there's four, four tenants within this building, and six tenant signs shown on those monuments. I should've clarified in the presentation, sorry.
That makes sense. Are there any bike spaces?
Bicycle spaces?
Yeah.
Yes, there's bicycle spaces shown to the east of the building in two locations.
Oh, okay. Maybe I didn't know what they were.
Yeah, they're a little bit, it's, it's a busy. There's a lot of stuff going on here, but there's a few, and, and I didn't include the legend in blowing this up, but I believe the, the bike racks included in front of, I just lost my pointer. Included in front of the northern tenant, and then I think there's one more close to the, the junction between the southern, southernmost tenants.
I just had some, some questions about the cover page. I just had some, some questions about the cover page. When I looked at mine, there was no certificate of ownership, and I think we have to have that on there so the applicant has to sign it.
So the town is still the owner of the property, and we worked back and forth with them to, originally, they did show two certificates of ownership, but the town evidently is going to be the owner of the property until this application's approved. So the town will sign on behalf of it, and then the purchase and sale agreement for these lots will be completed after that, is my understanding.
Okay. If somebody had to nail...
Any other comments or questions?
Is there, is there any consideration for solar on the roof of the building?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I, I do have a question as well. I wondered, as I looked at this rendering, if there'd been any consideration in the survey of how this might impact the buildings that are kind of set back behind this building. Will it harm their visibility? Will they be allowed to look at different ways of signage to make sure that they don't get lost behind this new building?
Which businesses are you speaking of?
So I think that there is the Superior Liquor behind there, as well as the Old Chicago and a couple of other...
Across the street.
Buildings. Right. But as you're traveling, I guess, north on McAsland, will this block visibility to those buildings?
I don't think so.
I don't believe so, but I don't know how much consideration's been given to that specific question. And the, like I said before, the, the two businesses that are using this property currently for signage are going to continue to actually have signage here and have signage in two locations rather than one. But I don't know of any concerns that the rest of the Superior Plaza complex has regarding visibility. The building itself is not all that tall. For the, for the height that's allowed on this property in the PD, it's less than, less than half or right at half of the allowed height, and that's when you factor in that southwest corner. Most of the building height on this property is just 22, 20 to 22 feet in height.
Okay.
Now, I can add to that. When you're approaching this site from the south, you're looking at the narrow side of the building until you're actually, it increases in size, but by that time, your plane of view is gone already to Brakes Plus and over to, in my view anyway, to Superior Liquor, in terms of buildings.
Okay. So as you're traveling south to north...
You're going north, yeah.
Yes.
You encounter in your, in your view, the narrow side of the building until you're obviously getting closer to it as you go by it. Now you're looking though hard to the right, and you're, probably your field of view has already gone past this building, and you're looking at Brakes Plus and Superior Liquor.
Gotcha. And even with the, the glass tower, the stone and glass tower? I'm sorry, just the...
The light tower?
The light tower, right. You think you're past... The decreased visibility at that point, traveling south to north?
Well, the light tower, the light box is probably only about a quarter of the length of the entire narrow side of the building.
Okay.
That's all I can come up with.
Thank you. I, I'm just wondering, you know, I'm, I'm having a kind of a hard time visualizing, seeing past that, but I think that it looks like this, this taller portion of the building would be closer to McAsland and away from the existing buildings that are there. With that, is that fair?
I think the other thing is too, is when, when Marshall Road is finished, all the way down into the town center, be a lot of people making a lot of left and right turns in there. You go past this building, you're already looking through the parking lot, and you see the other end of Superior Liquor, as well as on down to Old Chicago. And the development of the lot next door, which would be lot three, is going to be a whole different ballgame, and it may have a tall building on it, but they're going to be set back quite a way. So you're going to see probably as you come down here, all the way down to Old Chicago, because the existing ice facility won't be there.
So these are the other 3D perspectives that the applicant provided in the last couple of days, may help you understand the, the context and kind of the scale of the structure proposed. So this is looking from the northwest corner to the southeast.
Facing McAsland.
This is at that southwest part of the building corner. As they're turning into this drive-through, there's the pickup window down here. And this is, again, from the northwest corner of the site. I had to flip back, that's why it's the same one. And then this is the southeast corner of the site. This is where these folks are coming through the drive-through at their pickup window. This is the patio area in front of Starbucks, that's the firehouse subs. And then this is the, the, this is showing the parking in front of, in front of those structures, and this is the entrance to that. So this is the northeast corner of the proposed structure, kind of facing to the southwest.
Thank you. That helps with context.
Sure.
I think if we are closer to McAsland, then I visualize...
Closer, but still, I believe 75 feet setback from the right-of-way, from the property line. It's a pretty significant setback. And then if you guys, while we're at it, we might as well look at the light tower images that they provided as well. So it's a acrylic glass or acrylic material that's, it's a light box essentially, so it's perfectly controlled as far as how bright it is. And this is just an image that they provided in order to show that it's an architectural feature, not really a light source or anything that's going to cast light off the property or anything like that. But we're not going to be advertising CU or Starbucks or anything like that.
Yeah, I was looking at them. They're not going there.
No, no.
That's the only question I have.
Okay, I'm fine. I think it's very attractive.
Thank you for the extra pictures, bud.
Yep.
Whoever provided those, thank you.
First to your members, but before we move on to more discussion, perhaps since the applicant is here...
Excuse me, Liz, could you speak into the mic?
Sorry, Phyllis. Since the applicant is here, before we move on to discussion, perhaps we give the, them an opportunity to make any additional presentation or statement that they wish, and then even though there may not be any public here to comment, let's also be sure to ask for public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission, and I want to thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Clint Jamison. I'm a principal at CenterPoint Development. And first of all, I want to thank Steven and the rest of the staff. They've been amazing, and the quick turnaround was appreciated. I know it was stressful on my consultants, but, you know, they were willing to work with us and get, meet our schedule and delivery timelines for Starbucks and our other tenants. So I'm here tonight to answer any questions. I think Steven did a great job on the presentation. We added these additional photos and, and other design pictures. So if there's any other specific questions, I'm, I'm here to answer.
I just think it's very attractive.
Thank you. We like it a lot.
Yeah, we, I do too.
So we noticed that T-Mobile was one of the tenants and wondered if that was just for illustrative purposes, or if, if maybe we're looking at tenants like that.
No, it, well, we're, we've, we have a sign letter of intent with them, so we're going to lease. We feel confident we're going to get the lease done. It's not done, but that is a, a real proposed tenant for the building. We were initially talking to AT&amp;T, and AT&amp;T backed off, and then T-Mobile stepped in. So we're, we're really close on a deal with them.
I, I think your, your drawings and the schematics and everything are beautiful. I think it's going to really highlight that corner when people come off of 36.
Yeah.
It's really the, the Brakes Plus building is not that attractive necessarily. This is much more attractive. So as, as people come into the town, the town center, this is one of the first architectural pieces they're going to see. So I think the, needs to make a big splash, and that, that light box, I think, makes a huge impact.
I wish it were my idea. It's not.
Okay.
It's G3 Architecture. They did a great job. I think the building elevations are amazing. It's one of the nicest projects in terms of design that we're doing right now. And so we're really excited to get this project going and, and do a nice development in the town of Superior.
Nice. I think I'd, I'd like you to kind of keep in mind, if you could put some solar on the roof in the future, that might help, you know, offset your investment.
When you made that comment, it made me think that, I know, maybe one of the previous hearings had been brought up, my partner was here, about having some electrical charging stations. And so we have two, two planned stations within our parking field that, that we didn't talk about tonight.
Yeah, on the, on the north side there, yeah.
And I think we're going to end up relocating that to, to help some parking stalls for Pete's side, but there will be, somewhere within the project, there will be two charging stations.
That's good. Can you, can you show me where the... I just thought of it. So coming, is there any outlets from the parking lot to the east?
No.
No. It's all contained. You have one going, you have two going.
Yeah, only Superior Plaza Way is the kind of entry and exit points for parking lot.
Okay. Okay, now I see it.
Yeah, it was, it was off the screen.
On the end there. Okay.
Thanks.
This is something that... I, I don't think I'm speaking on a turn, but in the future, the hotels, the two projected hotels are to be to the east on lot three. And there will be some circulation between their parking and this parking. In other words, people from the hotel don't necessarily have to get on Marshall Road if they are in their car and they want to come here, stop Starbucks, whatever, and then continue on. They might be able to come down one of the drive aisles from their parking area into this parking area. And I think that's understood in the agreement, parking agreement. But just to let you know, we don't, aren't going to dump, we're not thinking about having to, to dump all the hotel traffic that wants to come here onto Marshall Road and then to come back in here. So we've, we've thought about that in advance. And the town owns basically lots, at this point, lots one and two, although they will be selling, I believe it's lot one, and we maintain our own ownership of, the town does on lot two. So, and under agreement. So just for your edification on that. So from a circulation standpoint, that should help a lot for those who want to come here from the hotel before they continue on wherever they're going to vote or whatever.
So Fred, you were saying so the proposed future hotel is going to be on lot three where Boulder Valley Ice sits right now?
Correct.
So they, they would share that property lot?
Yeah, and there's, it's even, it's a bigger lot than what the ice rink takes up now, to be quite frank. So it's a good sized space. And you can see it on that other graphic you had, oh, there, there you go, there. It's a pretty good size.
Mm-hmm.
They're talking about a couple of hotels and then all with connected parking between the both of them, and will get some connection over here. Good for them and good for the circulation on Marshall, because that seems comfortably to have people going from the hotel over here to get onto Marshall and then get off again.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I agree. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that's going to present on behalf of the applicant?
Public, public comment.
Is there any public comment at this time regarding this project? If not, we're going to close this portion of the hearing. Thank you very much. What do you guys think?
I think it's beautiful.
Yeah, I do too.
I think they should start tomorrow.
Put a little more pressure on them.
It's going to be nice to see something...
Yeah.
...being built that starts the town center, you know?
Right.
Moving forward.
And I do like the colors.
I, I love the colors.
I do like the colors.
Yeah, I think the colors are excellent. They blend in so well with the surrounding area.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I think we're all in agreement.
I, I think it brings much-needed newness to our town as well.
It does.
I think it'll be inspiring to...
Yeah, the architecture.
Other people.
Yes.
Whoever builds or wants property in that area.
Being first, it sort of introduces the look that...
Yeah.
You know, we want to continue, at least the quality of it for sure.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Should we make a motion?
I think it's another resolution, or is it just a motion?
Resolution.
Are you going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for the Town of Superior Planning Commission to approve the resolution number PC-5, series 2016. It's a resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of the final plot development plan and special use for Superior Retail, lots one and two, block one, Town of Superior, excuse me, Superior Town Center, and case number FDP-16-1.
Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Eaton has seconded. You ready to vote? Call for a show of hands in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We're good? Thank you very much.
Staff announcements.
Yeah, before we go, any, anything coming up with the staff or next meeting hypothetically? Any contingencies that we have to be aware of?
Nothing that I'm aware of at this time, no.
I liked getting those extra pictures. That was...
It's helpful.
Huge help.
Yeah, it did help a lot.
I mean, you could sort of, it's much better when you can look at it all.
Visually, it, of course, enables us to kind of think of what it's going to look like.
We need to go out in the hallway. We're still in the meeting.
Excuse me, guys, we actually haven't adjourned yet, so if you could step out in the hall or just one second. Thank you.
And there's a lot going on on the ground in that area, too.
Yes, there is.
The north end, south side of that building.
Correct.
So I'm sorry, were there staff announcements?
No staff announcements at this time, no. Sorry.
If you're going to adjourn this meeting, thank you.
Okay, now you can talk.
I guess I have to sign a few things before I leave. I guess I have to sign a few things before I leave.